Six o'clock on the news.
Yep. Today's June twenty-four, two thousand nineteen at six P M. And I welcome everyone in chamber, someone at home watching television. Thank you all the city council and all the staff here today. I hope we have a good meeting today. The, uh, do we have any season form? No one, no one brought any form? Okay, uh, item number one will be season form, visitor form, and anyone would like to speak in front of council now, welcome. I don't go ahead. By the way, the first item will be discussed on Tarrant County Homeless Coalition diverse outreach resource. Uh, please invite Mister Tammy McGee.
It's McGee.
McGee.
Yes.
McGee, okay, sorry ma'am.
That's okay.
Just like my name, okay.
You know?
You can.
Thank you, thank you mayor and council for having me tonight. My name's Tammy McGee. I'm with the Tarrant County Homeless Coalition. Um, and I just wanted to, that, thank you for the invitation, Ms. Thompson. Thank you for having us. Um, I presented to mayor's council of Tarrant County not too long ago to give an update of where we are. Um, so the Tarrant County Homeless Coalition is a umbrella organization, if you will. Um, we work with all of the major, um, organizations that address homelessness in Tarrant and Parker Counties. So, we work with over fifty agencies in town. Uh, we help coordinate resources, we help collect data, we help communications, and we help people come together, um, around solutions to end homelessness in our community. So, I, I hope to tell you a little bit about kind of what homelessness looks like in our community and what efforts are out there now, um, and how we are, are providing those solutions, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. So, um, there's a lot of information in this. I'm gonna run through it quickly, but I'm happy to, to talk to any of you more after, afterwards as well. Um, where am I? Ah, here I am, okay. Thanks. Um, okay, so, um, we've made a major effort in this community over the last year and a half to go from an, uh, a community where we had a lot of different programs and a lot of different organizations providing those programs, uh, it, to be more, to have more of a sys- uh, systematic approach to that and to help coordinate that in a way. Um, we have a new continuum of care board. It's a community-based board. It is made up of a leadership council and a membership council. Um, that leadership council is made up of Mayor Price of Fort, or City of Fort Worth, Mayor Williams of City of Arlington, uh, Tarrant County, Judge Whitley, uh, the mayor, I'm sorry, county judge, uh, Pat Dean from Parker County, and the chair of the mayor's council of Tarrant County. So, um, they meet at least, uh, twice a year. They've met about six times over the last year, and they kind of provide that oversight to make sure that our planning and direction, uh, is something of benefit to all of our jurisdictions. So, uh, my organization, the Tarrant County Homeless Coalition, is that backbone support. We staff all of the, the committees and the board. We also work, and if you look at this right here, all of the, these buildings here are considered, uh, different agencies and organizations that you're probably familiar with, um, that provide services directly to the homeless. So, uh, we call all of these organizations collectively together our continuum of care. Um, and all of these different interventions have many organizations that provide programming and, and try to help the homeless in different ways. So, we know people experiencing homelessness, um, have a variety of needs. We have people who need prevention services, so these are people in their home who might have received an eviction notice and might need, uh, some assistance to stay in their home. Um, we also have diversion services. These are folks who, uh, may need temporary shelter, um, or maybe staying in a camp or in their car, but very, on a, on a very temporary basis. They might have income already existing and they are able to get a deposit and first month's rent and get back on their feet very quickly. Um, they may have, uh, social supports, like a, a mom that lives in another city or something, and we can help them connect to their family supports, uh, in other cities. We have outreach services that go out to camps and under bridges, um, to actually get, assess people who are staying in camps and maybe in their cars, um, to help them get into shelter, help them get into housing. Uh, we have emergency shelter services. You might be familiar with these folks. This is like Presbyterian Night Shelter, Salvation Army, Union Gospel Mission. A lot of folks are, are knowledgeable about emergency shelter services and what they provide. Of course, it's temporary and we try, our goal as a community is to get people out of emergency shelter within sixty days. Um, we have, then we have all different types of housing supports here. We have short-term housing supports for folks who just need maybe up to a year's worth of ass- of assistance to get back on their feet, and we have longer-term supports called permanent supportive housing and permanent housing, for folks who have chronic disabilities, chronic diseases, uh, and will need a longer-term support in order to, to be able to maintain housing. Of course, our continuum of care works very closely. These partner agencies down here, this is people like, uh, J P S, M H M R, um, even our, um, our, um, veteran services, jails, our criminal justice services, our, our P D. Um, these are all entities that have a population focus other than homelessness, but have services directly to affect homelessness, and we work closely with them. They all have seats on our board of directors and are, have been a part of our planning over the last year. We know in home- uh, homelessness in our community on any given day, there's about two thousand people in Tarrant and Parker County that experience homelessness. This is people that are either on the streets or in shelters. Uh, annually, over seventy-five hundred people will experience homelessness in our community. Some are homeless for days, weeks, or even months or years. Uh, we know about sixty-four percent of them are male, forty-nine percent white, uh, fifteen percent we say are chronic. These are folks who have that severe mental illness, chronic physical diseases, um, are struggling with homelessness for a year or more. Uh, lots of domestic violence issues, mental health and substance abuse issues. Um, twenty-one percent of our folks are, are families. We know, over the last several years, we've, um, surveyed people experiencing homelessness. We do an assessment on everybody that experiences homelessness. When they, when they go to seek shelter, or when they go to seek any service that's within our continuum of care, they get, uh, the first thing they get is a scan card. Uh, it's an actual I D. Card, and that I D. Allows us to be able to assess people. We, we ask them a bunch of questions about why they're homeless and what's their family makeup and what their, what needs do they have. Um, how could they get back into housing and how could they get back on their feet? And with, over the, it's been very consistent over the last few years, um, number two, number one and number two, loss of, uh, lack of income and inability to pay rent are consistent reasons why people become homeless. Domestic abuse, uh, domestic violence and substance abuse are number three this year. Um, substance abuse for men, domestic violence for women. We always say homelessness is a math problem. You can think about, if you're making a minimum wage and you're bringing home seven twenty-five an hour, you're, you're, you're making about a thousand dollars a month. We say, we recommend that people pay about thirty percent of their income towards housing in order to be able to maintain and live. Uh, and there's nowhere in Tarrant County that you can rent a place for three hundred dollars a month. It's just not possible. For people who are on, um, social security disability or, um, S S I, we're talking about elderly and disabled folks, uh, their average social security income is seven fifty a month. Again, not enough to maintain even a one-bedroom apartment in, in all of Tarrant County. So, uh, we're seeing the face of homelessness change quite a bit. Um, it's no longer people who aren't able to work. A lot of our homeless are working two and three jobs and still, um, unable to maintain at that rate. Um, again, this goes back to, how do we know all of this? We do that assessment when people first become homeless. Um, this helps us, so we, we literally create a by-name list. We know, um, people experiencing homelessness by name, and we know, um, kind of what their needs are, so we can determine what types of assistance they're eligible for. Um, we've gone through a, a strategic planning process over the last year. I'm gonna go through this very quickly for you guys, um, but if you have questions, just let me know. Um, so we've created a, a, in, a, a shared vision for the whole community, um, where all of our partner agencies can align to this vision and know that we're all kind of working on these goals together to move the needle on homelessness, 'cause part of the issue we've had is everybody kind of had their own, own missions. Um, and now we really have come together kind of as a community and really kind of aligned so that we can work together and you utilize each other's resources, um, and not, not have to reinvent the wheel. Um, so, uh, and our vision is simply that everybody has a place to call home and the resources to live their best life, because we know their best life may be different for each individual. Um, of course, the C O C. Is there to cultivate those partnerships and to make sure that we have an effective and efficient community solution to homelessness. Uh, we've adopted a set of values for each program. We wanna make sure that we're operating within these values and that we, all, everybody that is providing these programs has these cultural, uh, these competencies, core competencies for the community. Um, so we have five goals around our strategic plan. Of course, we wanna have that system of care that I showed you, that continuum of care. We wanna make sure it's effective and efficient as possible. We do a lot of program monitoring. We make sure that our agencies, that the money we're spending is being well-spent and that it's, they have effective programs that they're actually producing outcomes. And so, we've started being a lot more data-driven in our community. Um, again, we're housing-focused. We wanna make sure that, you know, housing is the baseline for a lot of people to be able to make any other changes in their life. So, if they're struggling with substance abuse issues or mental health issues, once they have a secure place to stay, those things become a lot easier for us to intervene on and to have case management and, and other services wrapped around to make sure that they are getting what they need. Um, we wanna have an engaged community. We wanna make sure that neighborhoods and faith-based groups understand kind of where we are and what we're working towards and help them get plugged in and get involved, um, in, in our mission. Um, and we wanna make sure we have committed resources, and not just committed resources, but resources in the right places as well. Um, so here's a, kind of how our, our board is set up and how, uh, there are five goals, and it's no mistake that there are five standing committees of the board to make sure that they ha- there's some accountability in each of those goals. Again, this is a, this is our housing crisis system of care. I told you about each intervention that we have. Um, we have eight agencies doing prevention. Um, we have over fifty agencies in our continuum. We have over a hundred different programs that serve the homeless in Tarrant and Parker Counties. Um, of course, the nature of homelessness is not that each person will use one program and that's it. They will use multiple programs throughout the system in order to get their needs met. Um, one strategy that we're using is to break down the homeless population into priority populations, and each year really focusing on that part of the system, how well it works, what resources do we need, how do we, how will, can we perfect the interventions for that population and, and streamline those interventions, um, to make, uh, to move the needle. Uh, and I'm happy to say, veterans, some of you might have heard about our Hundred Day Veterans Challenge last September, from September to October, I mean, from September to December, we spent a hundred days. We, our challenge was to house a hundred veterans in a hundred days, and we housed a hundred and eighty-one, uh, which was really great. So, it's really amazing when the community comes together, and it's not just, it's not just the nonprofits, it's not just the cities and the counties, um, but it's everybody. Uh, for the first time last, last fall, I had landlords reaching out saying, uh, "We have openings. Can we house a homeless person?" And I will tell you, in twenty years of working in Fort Worth and homeless services, rarely do I have landlords ask to be housing people. So, that was a great, great thing to see, communities wanting to get involved and help. Uh, this year, in this fall, look for our youth challenge. We're gonna house as many homeless youth as we can in the fall. Uh, we define youth by eighteen to twenty-four, by the way. And if you know anybody or have any, any kids that way, that age, you know that that is a challenge for a lot of young people anyway, much less those that don't have homes. Uh, we do track system performance measures. We look at how many people were served, length of stay in those programs. We wanna know if they're coming back to homelessness, so we look at returns to homelessness. Uh, we look at employment and connection to employment. This year, when we are doing those assessments in the beginning, uh, we are also assessing for employability now, and so we're, uh, taking that, and when people are employable, we're triaging them and getting them to, connected to employment services as well. So, uh, workforce center, uh, goodwill, uh, the women's center, they all have great employment services programs, and we're getting people connected to those to get jobs. Once they get a job, and, um, we are providing bridge funding so that they can get a deposit and first and second month's rent to help them till, through to their per- first paycheck. So, um, that's the rapid exit program that's new for this year. Um, housing stock, we are short forty thousand units of housing for people making zero to thirty percent of A M I in our community. Um, this is a big thing that cities have a great impact on. Uh, we've gotta get creative about how we design housing and how we build housing. Traditionally, we've relied on tax credit properties to be that, uh, answer to housing, and for the homeless community, tax credits produce anywhere from maybe ten to thirty units a year. And you can see, we have over two thousand people in any given day experiencing homelessness. So, we're never gonna be able to build fast enough with the traditional multifamily tax credit model. Uh, so we've got to get creative. We've gotta look at shared housing. We've gotta look at tiny homes. We've gotta look at different ways that we can, um, create, uh, smaller projects, I would say, but projects that are impactful all throughout the community, um, to be able to house people. You know, if I come to you and I say I wanna put two hundred homeless people in an apartment complex in your neighborhood, nobody's gonna say yes to that probably. But if I come to you and say, "We're gonna build a, a, something that a church or community center or somebody can adopt with five units or eight units," people can get their ideas around that and get supportive and get behind that. So, we need to do more projects with, uh, less, bigger impact for us, less impact on the k- neighborhood, and really that blend in and, and contribute to the neighborhood. We have, you can see right now, of those people assessed, we have thirteen oh nine on the, on the short-term rapid rehousing waiting list and four hundred and seventy-eight on the waiting list for permanent supportive housing. Those are people with chronic diseases, um, that need permanent help. Again, this is a community effort. We're asking everybody in the community to come together around this. Neighborhoods inclusive of churches, businesses, foundations, um, and, and it, the response has been great so far. We will be launching a membership campaign in the, in the fall, so, to help direct people on how to give and how to get involved, right? So, uh, how to, how to make volunteering more effective and in-kind donations as well. Um, we say about, this is just looking at our funding, our current funding. We get about thirteen point three million dollars from HUD. It goes, um, that's from, uh, HUD, C O C. Grants. Um, those grants go into rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing most, almost exclusively. Um, you can see there's very little funding for other types of preventions in our, in our continuum of care. We say about twenty-five percent of our population can be helped with prevention, uh, right here, and, uh, another twenty-five can be helped with diversion. If fifty percent of our population can be helped with those interventions without needing a permanent voucher, we need to come up with more solutions and more money to be able to implement those, those solutions. So, um, again, I hope this was helpful. It's a broad overview. Any questions?
Yes ma'am.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
So far, your presentation looking good.
Thanks.
But the main thing, if I saw a homeless in my town, they say I need help.
Yeah.
I didn't see ho- uh, phone number.
Yep.
Address, anything?
So, I should've put the phone number on here, I'm sorry. We do have a hotline that you can call.
But how do we do?
You can call.
Do I call you or somebody?
Yep.
And you come pick him up or what?
Yes. So, we have a hotline that anybody can call. The number is on this. Um, I brought some of these pamphlets. These are called Pocket Pals. We produce them every year, and these are good to have. You can pass them out directly to people experiencing homelessness, and they're full of resources. Um, our hotline is the first thing on here. It's, um, eight one seven nine nine six eight eight zero zero. Uh, and we answer that all the time. Um, and you are welcome to call that, and we will be able to get, or you can have the person call us directly. That's even better sometimes, so that we can get the information from them, what their need is. And like I said, we have six outreach teams in the community that can definitely come out and meet with them as well.
The reason I ask you this, because I was a law enforcement officer for thirty-two years.
Yes.
Many time, I got a homeless during winter term, and actually, I tell you, I don't know who to call.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
Yep.
That's why this information good, but we need to, uh, maybe put on our website or any, on the website, you know?
Yeah, I'm happy to share that and share this link as well. Um, on our website, you'll see a link of all kinds of resources, whether it's housing resources, outreach, I need a, a utility bill paid or anything like that. We have all those resources on our website as well.
Thank you, Ms. McGee, and, uh, council member.
Do you have a breakdown of how many homeless are actually in Halton City?
I don't with me, but I do.
Okay.
We, we can pull that information.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
Yeah, we sure can.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes, I know that we have churches and different organizations that are available to us. Um, from time to time, we do have issues with utility bills where there's been an illness. Say, a parent, uh, lives by themselves, but they've been ill, and the, uh, child comes and is helpful, but they can't pay some of the bills that have been incurred since the illness.
Sure.
Or we have a situation where homeless people are just going throughout the city, but when you offered them a chance to move a, to move into, um, a living quarters or, uh, to progress themselves, they walk away from you.
Mm-hmm.
How, how do you handle things like that? I mean, how, how can we as a community, either as a church or individual, how can we help these people? Get connected to you, or is there some secret that, that we need to say?
I wish, I could tell you a secret sauce. Um, so, progressive engagement is what we use, and my best advice is to get them connected with one of our outreach teams. Uh, it may not be an overnight resolution, but as long as they're engaged, we'll be continually working with them and find out why. Um, why do they not want help? What is the, what, you know, I had one person tell me that they didn't want housing because they were scared to live by themselves. We had offered housing to them for three years, and no one had ever asked them if they wanted a roommate or not. We put them with a roommate, and they're absolutely fine. So, sometimes it's just asking the right questions, but we have people who will, who will make sure that they do that, and getting them in touch with an outreach worker is probably the first and best thing that we can do.
And I do know previously, we've had situations where an individual was called to seek help for the utility billing.
Uh-huh.
And they've gone through a list of, of, uh, organizations that provide that, and nobody was willing.
Yeah.
So, is that something you were saying, that you provide that, that truly is that, uh, something that we need to look into?
Well, there's always a shortage of resources, right? Um, I know that Catholic Charities is one of those organizations that provides that utility assistance, and oftentimes you'll call on the fifth, they'll start on the first of the month with a brand-new set of resources, and they'll be out by the fifth. So, um, sometimes it's timing. Um, sometimes it's the eligibility requirements, and we can work with them on that. If you call this hotline that we have, the nine nine six eight eight zero zero, uh, we have a, a diversion specialist that can, that can help with those things.
And you say that you have teams, like, on the weekend. Do these teams go out if they're called as well?
They do, and we're working currently with trying to expand those teams. Um, so Hands of Hope is the team that covers a lot of Halton City area. Um, and they are actually working right now to kind of double the size of their, their efforts, so, um, but we do, uh, Catholic Charity Street Outreach Team works on weekends as well.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Yes.
And as far as my part, I appreciate what you're trying to do to help the people in our area, whether it's Halton City, Fort Worth, or Keller, or wherever it might be. I certainly appreciate.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Council Van Zandt, please.
Ma'am.
I just had a couple of real quick questions. When a homeless person immediately, um, the, one of the main things we hear is, "I don't have an address."
Yes.
So, I can't apply for a job.
Yep.
I don't know where I can get my income checks, Cummings, S S I, whatever it is. Do you have an immediate solution for that?
Yeah, so they can always use, even if they don't stay at Presbyterian Night Shelter, True Worth Place is the day shelter there, and they can use that address for any mail services, any, that can be their legal address anytime.
Good to know.
So, and it's right off Lancaster, on Cypress.
Familiar.
Yeah.
Um, also on that, we have so many, uh, single women that are put out on the street with children.
Yep.
And they are on these long waiting lists for housing. So, they don't qualify as homeless, but I did see domestic violence and other things. What about ones that maybe it's not domestic violence, but they're put out of their home? Is there, uh, immediate help for that?
So, there's immediate shelter for that.
Okay.
Um, they are absolutely welcome. So, the way our emergency shelters work here, um, are, is Salvation Army on Lancaster is kind of the family center. They take single women and they take families. Um, there's, single, single women are able to go, and families are both able to go to Presbyterian Night Shelter and Union Gospel as well. Um, but Salvation Army kind of takes them first, and then kind of, the shelters kind of organize them, themselves in that way. Um, but, um, I'm not sure beyond being literally homeless, living in their car. Um, but um, I'm, I'm not sure beyond being literally homeless, living in their car, um, are these folks living in hotels or?
Yes.
Yes.
Like I'm talking two to three days out, but they're overwhelmed at the length of the list of waiting.
Right. So, that's where our diversion efforts would come in, and if they did call our hotline, Bambi would help them try to find a way, like if they just needed a deposit. We have a, we have a fund in, in our community called Direct Client Services Fund. Not a pretty name, but it's pretty effective money.
Yeah.
Um, and that is that one-time assistance to help them get back on their feet. So, if they're able to just uh be able to rent a place, um, but need that deposit and first month's rent, then she can help arrange that for them.
That's so helpful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Van Zandt. Any more question from council? Now, you can sit down. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tammy Mackie. The next item, I would like to invite the Public Work Director, Mr. Greg. Let I say your name, okay? Hang on. Nguyen Hughes.
Since I flubbed it at the last meeting, the pronunciation is Van Nguyen Hughes, but Greg is fine.
Thank you, Goheza.
So, it's probably been quite a few meetings that I approached the council about TechDOT's project to improve safety on Denton Highway North of Loop Eight Twenty by adding medians. Council had quite a bit of questions uh in terms of why are they necessary? When can we expect to see the project? And TechDOT has graciously offered to come and do a short PowerPoint presentation and answer any questions that you might have. In fact, TechDOT's North Tarrant Area Engineer, as you might know, TechDOT's divided into districts. Our district is a Fort Worth district, and then there's sub-districts within that district. Haltam City is in the North Tarrant Area District, and the head engineer out of that office is Mr. Mintron. Min has been with TechDOT for over twenty years, and the last thirteen, he's been in the North Tarrant Area Office. So, having said that, I will turn it over to Min.
Welcome, Min.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Mayor and, and Council for inviting me to make a presentation on uh US Three Seven Seven Race Medium Project. Um, again, I, I am Mintron. I'm the engineer for uh the North Tarrant Office with TechDOT. Um, with me today, I had, I had Demensi, sees our, one of our designer involved into, in the design aspect of these projects. Um, our office manage the preliminary designs um of the Three, uh US Three Seven Seven projects um with the primary goal to improve safety along the corridor. Um, the project limits uh is from eight twenty all the way to Big Bear Creek. Um, you can see, this project will involve uh Haltam City, Wataga, Keller on the north end, and then city forward on the west side. Um, our presentation today will focus mainly on the section within Haltam City limit. We see from eight twenty to uh Wataga Row. Um, one of our tasks is to look in, into the existing conditions uh along the corridor. And um the, the current conditions on, on US Three Seven Seven is uh, we have about thirty-three thousand to fifty thousand uh vehicle a day along that corridor. That is very significant. Um, according to our roadway design manual, uh for roadway without volumes or any roadways having more than twenty thousand vehicle a day, the designs who incorporates race medium um in, in the designs of the projects. So, um, the, the other task that we look into also is to look at the class data along the corridor. Um, so from our um information, from two thousand twelve to two thousand seventeen, we had about eighty-eight reported class along the corridor. Um, these are reported. Um, seventy of them are known incapacitating, uh seventeen are incapacitating injury, and one fatality. Again, these are reported, uh class only. Um, the datas up there involve different type of classes. Um, and for the typical roadway like Three Seven Seven, um, there are common type of uh conflicts on the roadways that potentially create classes. The first one is head-on collisions uh right there in the center lane. Those are serious class, um, that could end up, potentially can end up with fatality. Next one is side swipe uh in the center lane. Uh, what that mean is that when two vehicle in the center lane trying to making the left in, in the same time. Next is rear ends collusion in the center lane when um there's a speed change or the visibility's um aspects uh within the center lane. Then rear end in the two lanes, um, what that mean is that when a vehicle trying making, merging the um movement into the center lane, um, and reducing uh speed, um, that end up in the uh rear end collision in the two lane. Then also, um, a typical co- uh conflict is turning from the center lane, oh, turning to the center lane from the side street. Uh, that create, potentially create some incidents at the center lane itself. Uh, then merging from the center lanes uh into the two lane. Uh, because of the speed differential uh from the center lane to the two lane, it potentially creates some, some crash. Um, then turning from the center lane to uh, to side street, that by uh not having enough gaps uh within the traffic, so in the opposite direction, uh, we could potentially create some, some, uh, some accident. And lastly, uh, a pedestrians uh within the center lane that had no protections uh to the traffic on both sides, uh, both direction. So, again, these are the typical commons conflict that could potentially create crash um along uh typical section like uh US Three Seven Seven with sick lanes, uh, traffic, three-way, uh, three lanes per directions and a center lane. So, our current um typical section of the roadway down there, Three Seven Seven, is that we had three lane per directions with uh fourteen-foot wide two-way left turn lane. Um, and you can see right there in the middle. Um, what we like to do is to propose putting, uh, converting that fourteen-foot section into a race medium right there, they noted in number one. Um, and this is such a typical section for, for, for section that had fourteen-foot mediums. For section that we had turn lanes, um, we will convert into fourteen-foot sections um into a twelve-foot lane uh turn base uh and a two-foot race mediums um to separate the traffic. Um, this is how the current Three Seven Seven look like um in the existing condition. Um, this is what we propose to have with the race medium in the middle and curves on both sides. Um, this is how the current condition look like for a section with turn lanes. Um, and you can see, uh, the turn lane is separated by pavement marking only. Uh, the proposed section would have uh curves on both sides and uh mediums uh to separate, uh, to create like a, a separation barriers uh for, for the turn bay. Um, so by creating that separations, um, there's benefits in improving the safeties um by eliminate that, that those typical common conflicts uh along the roadway. And by eliminating the conflicts, uh, the uh, you can create a reduction about forty percent uh in crash. Um, and by improving uh, or giving a little bit more predictable movement in the turn lane, and by eliminate the worst uh collusion at all, is a head-on collusion. Okay. Um, so, in addition to improving safeties, the other aspect on, on, on race medium project is the improvement in, in operation. Um, the race medium uh projects uh will minimize the traffic backup due to accident along the corridor. Uh, it also help managing um, um, access, uh, cost over access along the corridor that potentially is uh impacting the flow to traffic. And lastly, is, is it help maintain the traffic flow and reduce the congestion delays uh along the corridor uh and in turn reduce uh fuel consumption and, and vehicle emission. Um, so, um, how we determine the opening, medium opening is by going to a, a list of priority. The first one is signal light intersection. Um, the next is non-signal light intersection that had a considerable volume of traffic from the side street. Uh, next, uh, major business corridor or, or areas that create or generates traffic during peak hours or, or peak uh business hours. And then, um, location where business had share access that minimize the number of driveways along the corridor. Um, so those are the priority that we have uh in determining the medium cuts uh along the co- uh corridor. So, how, um, how is that impact um business along the corridor uh when we talk about minimizing access or cost over access along the corridor? Back in two thousands, uh, the Texas A and M, uh, the Texas Transportation Institute performed a study um on um economic impacts uh of the race medium projects uh to adjacent business. And what they found out is that um business reported um, um, no change in pass-by traffic. Uh, and we talk about pass-by traffic only. Um, the others, um, comments were made is that um, a business reported an increase in, in sales and in customer, number of customer after the completion of medium projects. Um, part of it is because customer values, the, um, the favor of the roadway construction um and, and, and uh customer service qualities and pricing over accessibility. So, basically, if, if the business offer uh good quality, they, they will find a way to get there. Yeah. Um, so how, what's the overall impact? Um, about eighty percent of the business uh reported no complaints. Uh, ninety percent of the survey driver favors uh the improvement along the corridor uh instead of uh accessibility. And so, these are the information that we gather from uh TTI's study, which can be found um on Google. If you type in the title, economic impact to uh of race mediums um on adjacent business, you should be able to find that on the first tab. And um we, we, we can provide that link to the city staff if, if needed. Um, so overall, um, the race medium will um improve safety along the corridor. Uh, it will in turn improve traffic operation and access management. Uh, it will improve safeties uh to pedestrian. Uh, it create a better aesthetics uh along the corridors. Um, and then it's, uh, it's, it's had minimal impact on the adjacent development, and it highly recommended for uh roadway corridors uh like Three Seven Seven which have more than twenty thousand vehicle a day. Um, so, where are we with the projects? Um, we are in the preliminary phase right now. Um, so we, um, we try and working with city staff on uh, uh, working together and develops uh the schematic layouts uh so that we can have a public involvement and uh be able to get feedback from the public and city and stakeholder, uh especially business. Um, and that's where we at right now. We in that phase. Um, once we finish the uh public involvement process, then we will start moving forward the design phase and eventually uh the constructions uh in the future. So, currently, um, we had developed, uh, we had worked with the city staff on developing uh preliminary layouts. Let me go back here. This is just a section within um Haltam City. So, from the south side of eight twenty, uh, going uh up north, um, up to Bonner Road, we had two opening. Um, both of them are for uh left turn movements uh going southbound. Um, and you can see here, the green arrow is, is a section that had fourteen-foot race medium. The white section here would have two-foot race mediums. So, we, we, we'll be able to turn, um, convert that center lanes into a turn uh turn lanes, a twelve-foot turn lane. Um, going up north, um, we have another turn base at Browning. Um, this intersection had turn lane on both sides of the roadway. Um, against, uh, these are two-foot race mediums. Um, and this second section here had uh fourteen-foot uh race mediums with curves on both side. Going up north to White Creek Row, we only had a turn base on the northbound traffic um at this interse- um, um, signal light intersection. Next opening that we had is at Ship Row. Uh, that location, we had opening from a, a left turn base on both sides of, of, of the street. Moving up north, um, we had um a very short turn bay for this um, this business section. We work with cities on, on this. Initially, in our designs, uh, we did not provide a cost over. However, in, in talking with our city staff and Greg, uh, we had modify our layout to provide this uh cost, uh, cost over. And I believe that's a start bucket. Uh, I think that's what Greg mentioned to me before. Is that correct, Greg? Yeah. Yeah, the very important.
Where, where is, is that? Okay, I see it.
Yeah. The, um, the last intersection within Haltam City, Wataga Row, uh, we do have uh turn bay on both directions, and these are very long turn bays due to volume of traffic. So, so that's, that's what we have right now for our preliminary layouts. Um, did y'all have any question for me?
Let me ask you this. How long take this uh project done? Like a couple of months or? How long the TechDOT will start to do it? I mean, the time from start to finish.
Um, are you, are you talking about construction or design?
Yeah, construction, yeah.
Construction for this typical project would take about from four to eight months. Uh, so right now, we in the preliminary designs. Once we finalize our design, we will, we have a better uh understand.
And you will take uh at least two lane, right? One of each side. That mean you reduce the Denton Highway down to four lane during construction. Is that correct or no?
That is correct. We, we will had to reduce the, the lanes um to two lane per directions um to be able to provide a side buffer for the workers and be able to get equipment, construction equipment in and out.
Okay, Ms. Thompson. Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, looking at the intersection of Wataga Road and Highway Three Seventy Seven, would there be any way that there would be two turn lanes going west? Um, Wataga Road or Western Center, I'm sorry. Western Center is where I was thinking about.
So, right now, our current project is only looking at converting the center lane into turn lanes. Um, by doing that, we minimize taking right additional right way for the additional second lane. Um, we, um, internally, within TechDOT, we also still, uh, performing some uh operational study uh to address uh matters like the dual left turn that you mentioned about. And so, we also looking into that. Um, and, and, but right now, for the safety project standpoint, we only look at and converting the center lane into um the turn, uh, uh, turn lane. we only look at and converting the center lane into the turn, turn lane.
There is a lot of people that do turn, make a left turn there to Western Center. And it's gonna have to be a long, long stretch because it has been as halfway or farther down to some of the business where the people are in line to make that turn. So hopefully, you'll review that very cautiously. But going back to one of the things I note at 820 and 377, there on that section where you see the U-Haul, a lot of the problems we had originally were people that were trying to make a left turn into U-Haul. And that really presented a problem with the two lanes that are turning to go east on 820 because you've got all that. It's kind, it's better, but we still have people that make road turns down, which is really unsafe. But I think particularly that area is very congested and really needs to be reviewed for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lanza.
Thanks for coming today. It's a, it's a really good report. I wonder on those medians, would, would there be streetlights as well to light those medians so they're more visible at night?
The, the, we won't have illumination in the medians. I think if there existing illumination on the side, that's what we would have only. The, there will be payment markings on both side of the medians, so it, it will be visible. One of the thing we do look, look into is how to make the race median be construct, have some contracts in, in, in it. And I think, you know, it, it will, the driver will had to get used to it after it's been built to know the location, specific location. But we will have signers out incorporating the project to make sure that we provide direction for, for the drivers.
Well, I'm grateful because I, I do think that it's a deterrent to businesses right now because of the traffic. I was coming back, heading back south from there this morning. We're Hawthorne, we love our coffee, Starbucks, brand new Dunkin' Donuts there, and the traffic was literally out into the street. And so that was a concern. Do you think that will alleviate some of that?
The, you know, traffic backup from, from business typically associated with access management. Is, is, you know, sometimes the access location and the spacing of the access. You know, one of the point that we like to make is that if we can come up with some sort of share access, then we could be able to, to improve some of those backups. And, you know, because some of the had to, also had to do with internal maneuver or, or traffic control within the business itself.
Okay, just one last question. When you do the construction, will you do it then in phases, increments? Or will it all be done, will it all be blocked off at one time?
Is. It, it, it's a challenge with time because if you doing section is, it potentially prolong the project times. If we let the contractor go out there and do the whole corridor, the whole project at one time, it may reduce the, the construction time. And in turn, it lessen the impacts to the traveling public.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, so.
I'm very happy that you're going to do this. I've had, I've had so many near head-on collisions on this street, and I think it's a necessary effort. So thank you very much for the presentation, and I'm excited to see what the final plans are gonna look like. I, I'm, I do business on this street a lot with some of the vendors there, so I'm curious to see how, how the turns are going to affect that. But I know there are streets right behind most of the businesses, so I, I think it's gonna be great. Thank you very much.
Any more question from council? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we have one more item, but I believe we don't have time, so we will do next session, right? Yeah, next meeting. By the way, right now, we will resign into the executive session or be on chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.072. We'll be back maybe a couple of minutes after 7:00. Thank you.
...on June twenty-four, two thousand nineteen at seven oh eight. Before we do that, the regular meeting, this invocation and place of allegiance will conduct by Mayor Portem Linda Thompson.
Yes ma'am.
If you will stand and pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the Houghton City community, for the people who live here and work here. May you give those in our community extra encouragement and guidance as they work through storm damage. We thank you for the many volunteers that assist with duties effortlessly each and every day. Please help us to keep this a place that is peaceful and calm for all. We ask this evening for wisdom and grace upon decisions the council will make concerning our community. We pray that our hearts and minds will follow your perfect plan. Father, we ask special protection for our first responders and military that put their life on the line, whether on domestic or foreign soil. We pray for our city and city employees that we work together in a positive and encouraging way to unite our community. Again, we thank you for this day and the privilege to pray. And these, and all other blessings, we thank you. In thy name we humbly pray, amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. To the power of the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to the Texas flag, I would like to introduce to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please sit down, thank you. My name is Ann Trong and I'm Mayor Portem C.D. Welcome everyone here. First, I would like to say thank you again, our city council staff and all citizens spend a lot of time coming here to join our meeting. The next item will be announcement and events will done by City Secretary Mr. Archamacho, sir.
Thank you mayor. Meeting announcements for June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen in the public library. There are teen programs, family night, family movie night, summer reading programs, and classes for adults and ESL classes also, and other library activities that are listed on the library's website for the dates and times. Please check the website for this. But they're having a special Cardboard Kingdom, a space station edition, on Thursday, July eleventh from six-thirty to eight P.M., where they can build rockets, space stations, UFOs out of cardboard. And on Thursday, July sixteenth, they're having a lunar landing party to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary, if everybody remembers that, anniversary of the moon landing. Create your own moon rock and learn about the lunar landing. In community programs, Refresh B.I.S.D. will be held. Houghton City will be, will be supporting Refresh B.I.S.D. for their back-to-school event on Saturday, August seventeenth from nine A.M. to twelve P.M. at the Wile E. Coliseum at sixty-one oh eight Broadway Avenue in Houghton City. Refresh B.I.S.D. will serve students eligible for free and reduced lunch programs in all elementary and middle schools in Houghton City, North Richland Hills, Richland Hills, and Watauga attending the B.I.S.D. And during Refresh B.I.S.D., there will be backpacks, school supplies, haircuts, eye exams, sport physicals, hot dogs, helpful resources, and a time for fun. Refresh B.I.S.D. aims to help to get students ready for school, families connected with the community, and people transforming our cities. Families must pre-register to attend Refresh B.I.S.D. An online registration, registration will end July first, and you must pre-register during this time in order to attend. To register your students online, visit www refreshbisd.com. The Family Fourth is coming up. Celebrate our country's most patriotic holiday at the annual northeast Texas, excuse me, northeast Tarrant County's Families Fourth Celebration and Firework Show. This year's celebration will feature a free concert with country music star Holly Tucker, and there'll be food, fun, and entertainment for the whole family, and will start at five P.M. at the Hill Center with kids' activities, a salute to veterans, stage performances of local talent, and plenty of Fourth of July eats. The fireworks show will begin about nine-thirty P.M., so visit the Chamber Facebook page for more information. And again, it's held Thursday, July fourth from five to ten at the Hill Center. And the twenty-nineteen images from the calendar, all the entries from the twenty-nineteen images of Houghton City are available to pick up from the Houghton City Rec Center until Friday, July nineteenth. And that's our announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Archamacho. The next item will be...
Friend Have Friend and Mayor Portem Lynn Thompson. And me.
And council. Now, I'd like to take a brief moment to clarify to our community and to you what Friends Helping Friends, Social Transportation, or simply Friends Helping Friends really is. It's an organization that's nonprofit and has a five oh one C three. We do not, or are not supported financially by the city or any other organizations. All revenue is strictly through donations and fundraising, such as burgers and bingo. Everybody likes that. The directors are strictly volunteers, just as our drivers. Our mission statement is to engage the community to provide non-driving seniors a no-cost transport to and from their home to the Houghton City Senior Center. Currently, there are more seniors that need transportation to our senior center and back home. If you have an hour to spare, from nine to ten A.M. or one-thirty to two-thirty, please contact Fran Alley at eight-one-seven-nine-four-six-one-eight-seven-nine. Currently, Friday is a day we could use some extra help. Any day is appreciated and needed. Thank you. Okay, directors, if you would please come forward, and Bill Lanford.
You know, it's a warm heart of these people here. Friend Have Friends, that very important message, that even when we get older or when we retire, that need to be done because somebody need help so much that they can't do by themselves. And in front of me, in front of the council and the chamber here, a group of people with a big heart, bigger than me. But the, especially the director of Friend Have Friends Driver, and that's the former mayor, Bill Lanford. And would you come over here, please, sir? I have, I met him many times and I'm so impressed with him because, I don't know, look at him just like my commander or something, you know? He had the look of the general or something, but, okay, sir. Office of the Mayor, City of Houghton City, Texas, Certificate of Recognition, Mr. Bill Lanford. Whereas certain citizens of Houghton City exemplify community service to the high plateau of dedication of consistently displaying in you fish attitudes in contributing to the welfare of senior citizen, and whereas Bill Lanford have exemplified this persona in his volunteerism at the Houghton City Senior Citizen, serving at the director of Friend Have Helping Friends, Social Transportation Incorporated. And as a volunteer driver while serving on many other communities within our communities, and whereas he has demonstrated generosity to our senior through acts of fundraising, organizing, donating money, time, and item, and imparting his devotion and concern for our senior to his service. Now, therefore, I, Ann Trong, as mayor of City, Houghton City, Texas, do hereby deem it in honor and a pleasure to extend this certificate of recognition to Bill Lanford for his you fish commitment of service for our senior community through Friend Helping Friends. Side by, Ann Trong, the June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, congratulations, sir, and thank you so much. Yes.
And this on behalf of us, just to say thank you, and we appreciate you a lot.
I appreciate it.
And we're still gonna call you.
Okay.
Thank you one more time, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I know we have a lot more people, I, I hope I don't have to read all of them. So we now, everything you heard from Mr. Lanford will be the same, and now we call the name.
Right. Here's your list.
Okay, why don't you, we call right here, it's okay? Yeah. Okay, the Certificate of Recognition of Sam Patel.
Patel.
Patel. You take for him? Thank you. A Certificate of Recognition for Gil Skarkins. Then, she's not here. Then can I shake hand with you?
Sure, anytime.
And Certificate of Recognition of Maxine Buller. Please come.
Thank you, Maxine. She's one of the original.
Okay, the next one, Certificate of Recognition for Bee Permante.
Patel.
Patel?
Yeah, she's not.
She's not here again?
She's not.
Can I shake hand with you?
Sure.
Certificate of Recognition for Patricia Wall, where she is?
She had an appointment, so she's not here. Hey, they dropped, she dropped.
You are, you have a lot of certificates tonight. Certificate of Recognition for Tonya Sheen. Thank you for doing this for the city, sir.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am, yes. Okay, thank you. One more time. We have two more here, yes, three more. And a Certificate of Recognition for Kathleen Alfreds. Thank you. And recognition, a Certificate of Recognition for Christine Hell.
Hell.
I know you. Thank you, one more time. Last, but not least.
Yes.
But not last. Christine Nataniti. Okay, and...
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, thank you so much. I hope that you continue to help senior citizen, just like all the people, and we need to recruit more in the future. Thank you, and especially thank you to Bobby, Director of the Senior Center. You have done a good job, I appreciate that, thank you.
And I have paperwork for everyone, the councilmen who start out as drivers.
She has volunteer applications for everyone.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then, now we, monthly financial report, I would like to invite Financial Director, Sedona. Yes ma'am, go ahead ma'am.
This isn't near as fun as that was. What a terrible act to follow. This is gonna be your financial report for the months of April and May, and so looking at the overall fund summary for all funds, I pay special attention to the first column. For the fiscal year, we've budgeted forty-two, well, we have forty-two point two beginning balance. Looking at the revenue and expense, we should end at twenty-nine point two for both April and May. That takes us for the May year-to-date fund balance of forty-two point two million. Ending balance, just taking a look at current revenue and expenses would be fifty-nine point eight. For the general fund, our May year-to-date is eight point seven beginning fund balance. We have taken in forty-four percent of revenue, and we've spent forty percent of expenses. I'll remind you that through the month of May, that's sixty-seven percent through our fiscal year. So if we were just looking at the FY twenty-nineteen budget and how we should end with a ending fund balance of five point eight, that would take us to nineteen percent. that would take us to nineteen percent. Of course, one of our driving factors for revenue is our property tax revenue. So as of the end of May, we've collected right at fourteen million year-to-date. Nine point one million of that goes to the general fund. The remaining balance is to the INS or the debt service. The general fund sales tax revenue, year-to-date, we've collected right at seven million. This will give you a three-year comparison in our general fund sales tax revenue. You will note a slight increase in April and a slight decrease in May. In April, we had a four point six four percent increase, and you can see the numbers here. That takes us to year-to-date change over last year to six point seven seven increase. And then for May, we had that slight decrease of three point three two, which takes us to percent change total of four percent. And I will let you know, I have received June's numbers already, and we are up a little over two percent for the month of June. And again, those run two months behind in the actual reporting month. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. According to this report, you do have the details for both April and May.
Thank you, council, you have any question for, for her, or? No? You must done a very good job, and thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next would be consent, consent agenda. Item number two, minutes. Item number three, ordinance, number O dot two zero one nine dot zero one three dot fifteen. And number four is on the number O dot two zero one nine dot O one four dot one five. Do you have any question, council? Okay, if not, go ahead, for motions.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, which includes items two through four.
We got the motion for consent agenda, and we need second. Mayor Broten Thompson?
That would be for a second, Mayor.
Thank you, we have the first and the second now. Any more question? If not, uh, we wait for motion, or reshow your vote, I'm sorry. We have a sick approval and missing Mr. Water Crowe. He absent today, thank you, the both, I mean, three item pass. The next one would be regular agenda. Item number five, Veterans Memorial. Mr. Van Nuwenis. I will learn someday, sir.
Very good.
Your name, thank you.
You know, once you learn how to pronounce it, then you have to learn how to spell it, so...
That's good.
And I don't think I can help you with that, but my secretary may be able to.
Okay.
Anyways, this item concerns the Veterans Memorial, the project closeout. Think it'd be appropriate to provide you a little history on how this came about. It was back in 2015 that this council decided that they would like to have a Veterans Memorial. And at that time, I think Bob Watkins, who's in the off, in the audience will recall, a group started out meeting at the Haltam City Library. And at the time, the group didn't know if they wanted to be separate from the co, from, not just the council, from the city, to be privately funded, maybe have a little bit more freedom, or if they should be a full-fledged board or committee appointed by the city council. Through late 2015 and 2016, it was determined that probably the most appropriate thing to do was to be a, a city sanctioned committee. And throughout 2016, the Veterans Memorial Committee came up with some various designs, made some presentations to the council, and a plan that was generally like what you see here was approved. At that time, we also looked for an architect, and Deborah Gagliardi from the Gagliardi Group offered her services pro bono. And the engineering firm of Teague, Nolan, Perkins offered their surveying services pro bono as well. So after that, which now we get into about the late 2016 time period, they were off and running, came up with construction documents in early 2017, bid the project out. And on May 22 of 2017, council authorized the city manager to execute an agreement with Fort Worth Civil Constructors, a construction firm. From that firm, Doug Allenbaugh is in the audience, and he'd be happy to answer any questions at the end that I might not be able to. So while the council awarded the project on May 22, the contracts weren't issued till June 30. The Veterans Day celebration for that year obviously was just a few months later. And we had to go from basically bare ground to what you see there. So literally, we were off and running. I cannot give enough credit to the Veterans Memorial Committee. That committee during that time period met every two weeks. Sometimes they met at, on Fridays at seven o'clock just to go over materials and the status of the construction to respond to any questions that the contractor might have in proceeding. As, the contract was structured so that the project had to be substantially complete. And substantially complete had a very specific definition for this project. The ornate work that you see on the actual arch did not have to be up by the November 11th, but the arch had to be up, the pedestals had to be in, the globe had to be in, everything else you see there. The Haltam City Veterans Memorial lettering, that wasn't a part of the project either, that was an actual change order. But the project was substantially completed in time for the November 11 ceremony. And afterwards, the contract stated that the contractor had thirty additional days to completely finish that project. In the thirty additional days, the biggest headache, I guess, that the contractor had was the company that manufactures the panels that you see on the arch. He did use a local guy with the idea being that if he's local, we could get the product sooner. Well, that didn't happen, and it almost got into a lawsuit between our contractor and the supplier, who was out of Greenville. In fact, again, the Veterans Memorial Committee being so hands-on, they even drove out to Greenville to meet with the contractor. Long story short, the panels did come in, I want to say April, and were up, and were constructed immediately thereafter. So the Veterans Memorial Committee did a final inspection in April. They had a list of eleven items, with the eleventh item being, since the architect couldn't be here at that time, that the contractor addressed, you know, any items that she might have. The architect was actually out of the country. When she came back in, the contractor, Doug, myself, and a few other individuals from Public Works met with Deborah, and she had no additional items. So, again, the Veterans Memorial Committee met. It was about that time we noticed that some of the, the pool, which is underneath the globe, was settling. So we took the proactive stance of, one, having, we hired a, a firm to go out and take survey shots periodically, and we also did some additional soil testing. We believe we had that problem fixed, and, uh, we met with Doug and his staff in August. And at that time, the Veterans Memorial Committee took a vote on whether the liquidated damages should be assessed or whether Fort Worth Civil Constructors' retainerage, which is about forty-five thousand five hundred, should be released. At that time, it was determined that there was one other issue, and that was change order number two, which was for the lettering. Fort Worth Civil Constructors offered to, they would pay for that. That was an additional, was a little over twenty-five hundred dollars. The city did, the city's Parks Board, even, the change order was presented to them, they were gonna pay it, but under the circumstances, Doug said no, that his firm would take care of that cost. So that change order never went forward. So shortly after that August meeting, we did notice some additional settlement. We have since corrected that problem, we have kept an eye on it. There has been no further settlement. I polled the Veterans Memorial Committee within the last couple of weeks to see if they still had the same stance about the project closeout. And that was the two items that are indicated in my recommendation. And they all felt the same way that Fort Worth Civil Constructors should absorb the cost for the Haltam City Veterans Memorial lettering, and that the city council not assess any liquidated damage towards the contractor. Having said that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, Doug is in the audience, if you had any questions for him as well.
Thank you, Craig, and any question from council? Ms. Council Van Zen?
I would just like to thank you. I'm so proud to live in a city that has a Veterans Memorial. And for all the trouble, I know Councilmember Nun and Leila Caraway, several were involved, I can't mention all the names, but I'm just very grateful for that, it makes me proud, thank you.
I appreciate that, and you hit the nail on the head. There were lots of people in this community that were involved. And I've worked with both the Parks Board and our Planning and Zoning Commission, and all of our boards. As you know, they're the backbone to this city. But this Veterans Memorial Committee, meeting every two weeks, they really went out of their way to make sure they could do everything that they could to make sure that we had the ceremony prior on November 11th.
Thank you, Craig, I, uh, actually, I did stop by when they dig up the, uh, water pie or something like this. And it's a lot of work right there, but I appreciate that. By the way, council, any more question? You done a good job again, and thank you so much. And this item number five, ready for a motion? Council Wees?
See if I can get this right. On matter of the agenda item five, Veterans Memorial, make a motion that we approve the staff recommendations, which is the Fort Worth Civil Constructors absorb the cost for the lettering on the change order number two, and that the council does not assess liquidated damages toward Fort Worth Civil Constructors.
Thank you, Council Wee, and we need a second. Mayor Broten Thompson?
Mayor, that would be for a second.
Okay, we got the motion by Wees and the second by Thompson. And any more question for council? If you don't have them, please reshow your vote. The item is passed with the absent of Council Crowe. The next, uh, thank you, Mr. Greg. And the next one, the upon of the municipal judge.
If council members at the last...
Time we had the ordinance, uh, an ordinance is gonna be situated here because it has to be passed through an ordinance on this. And if you look on your head, and you have the fiscal impact that's sit, situated, and, uh, y'all want to report here? This is just as her reappointment right now. Am I correct, Wayne?
Yeah. Yeah, to, to add to that, the, the council had voted that the last time to reappoint the judge for another two-year term. It does have to be done by ordinance, so the ordinance is front of you, in front of you tonight to, to approve.
Okay, and any question from council? If you don't have question, this item ready for a motion. Ms. Wees?
Yeah.
For the, uh, agenda item number six, appointment of the municipal judge, O dash two zero one nine dash zero one five dash zero nine for another two years, I make a motion, we approve it on the first reading?
Yes, uh, thank you, Council Wees, and Mayor Broten, Linda?
Mayor, that would be for a second.
Thank you, we have a second. If you don't have any more question, and go ahead, please, reshow your vote. At the item number six, pass with six. Now number seven. Resolution number R dash two zero one nine dash zero one three, oh, nay. Consider action regarding approval of municipal judge annual compensation. Go ahead.
Mayor, council?
Um, first off, let me point out to you that, uh, there is a substitute resolution that has been put in front of you at the dais tonight. This resolution sets the compensation package for the judge, and what it would do is, it would approve an annual salary for the judge of seventy-seven thousand dollars. And also, the city provides the judge with a cell phone and laptop for her to perform her duties. So if you're in favor of that, we need a, a motion to approve the resolution.
Before that, you have any question on...
This is motion, right? Councilman Wees? You have question?
Lynn, do you have a question?
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Wee, for motion?
Thought Lynn got it first. Resolution R dash two zero one nine dash zero one three dash zero nine, make a motion that we approve the annual compensation package?
Mayor Broten, Linda?
That would be for a second, Mayor.
Thank you, now please reshow your vote. Item number six, pass. And now number eight, city staff report. Do you have any report? There is no report. The item number nine will be future agenda item. Council, you have anything to put on next agenda? Ms. Thompson?
In the last meeting, I requested that we, uh, bring up the boards and commissions, uh, that we needed to update and increase some of the information regarding the applicants.
Commission appointments is included in the executive session to discuss under executive session before we bring it into it. It is in executive session for y'all to speak about.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, council, so?
Um, and I'm new at this, if I do this wrong, please forgive me. I had mentioned to, uh, the city manager about potentially discussing an ordinance for food trucks or trailers in our city. And I don't know if this is the time to request that that be placed on the agenda. Okay, so I would like to request that that be placed on the next agenda. Food trucks or trailers, yes.
Yes, ma'am, we're gonna, we're gonna put that in the work session. Uh, we usually talk about the work session, in work session first, and as I told you, Glenna Rex and Chris are working on that, so...
Okay, so we're not gonna put it on the agenda?
No, it'll be on the work session agenda.
The work session, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, uh, council, so, any more from council? I see none, and we need to ball commission. Number ten, resignation of board commission. You have, anyone have anything?
We did not receive any resignations this, uh, since the last meeting.
Yes. And now is the time for item number eleven, appointment and reappointment of board and commission committees. Council, you have anything? If you don't, I have several. At first, I will upon council member Gabe Van Zen for the T I R Z board, play four. And Mayor Broten, Lynn Thompson, for CCPD board contact. And Catherine Gunter, beautification board. Resen Crowe, library board. And planning and zoning commission. Alternate one, Kelly Stallings. And alternate two, Lilian, Lilian Furries. F U R I E. Yeah. Zoning board of judgment, Jeff Cotton. Alternate Thomas Sanders. That's all I have. Please, uh, reshow your vote. Mayor, yeah? We ready? Okay, uh, on a pointy, uh, pass and approve it. Yeah, thank you. You have one? Mr. Hillier? Yeah.
Listed above, animal advisory committee. Nancy Watkins was assigned on May, on May thirteenth to be, to be a member of this committee as well, and it's not listed on this page. Okay.
Okay, you got it, right? Any more, any more appointee? If none, we move to item number twelve, attendant requirement, excuse absent of council member. At this time, we have council member Crowe absent today. Anybody want to make a motion? Mayor Portem Thompson?
I move that we excuse Water Crowe's absence today.
Thank you, ma'am. And second, Ms. Rent?
I have a second.
We got the motion, and please reshow your vote. Okay, that's approved by six council member. Now we have, any more appointee absent, anything? No? Okay, now we have moved to executive session, per on chapter five five one, section five five one point oh seven one, and five five one point oh seven two.